All right, good evening to everyone. Welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting for North Idaho College tonight. We are going to review the minutes. Oh, sorry, Chris, did you have something?
No, I'm just listening. I'm still trying to get video, but it might take a bit.
Okay. We do have a quorum, so I'm gonna go ahead and move to the review minutes item. That would be, trustees, if you had a chance to do the minutes, if there's any comments or changes for the minutes, any additions or deletions or anything? All right, I'm not hearing any, so we'll accept the minute as published. We have time available now for public comment, but Shannon has informed me that we have nobody signed up for public comment tonight, so it will be done. The next is celebrating success. It'll be Tree Campus USA after the storm. We lost a lot of trees, so it looks like Chris.
Trustee Banducci?
Yes.
I sent a note out earlier.
You are correct. My mistake. I'm sorry. What I would need, Mark, I want to make an adjustment to the agenda. Would we need a motion to do that? We're going to move up the tenure to after the public comment? Is that correct, Rick? Because we want to go, right, after the public comment?
It can, just before we do celebrating success, if we want to just go ahead and move that agenda item up to proceed that?
I think you can, trustee Banducci, I think, I think you can just go ahead and do that as long as nobody, no trustee has.
Okay. And this to accommodate the folks who are here for your tenure, so they don't have to stay till later in the agenda, they can sort of stay and listen to celebrating success and all that. We'd encourage it, but we'll go ahead and take care of tenure now then. Dr. Burns, are you prepared to address that?
Yes, thank you. Chair Banducci, members of the board, Dr. McLennan and Mr. Lyons, and colleagues and guests, it is always a great pleasure for me to be able to present the candidates being considered for tenure. And please let me also extend my thanks for moving the tenure discussion up a bit. We actually have at least one faculty member who needs to get back to class fairly quickly and want to make sure that he can join this process before he has to return to class. So to start, I would like to, for the benefit of the new board members and for those who may not be familiar with the tenure process at NIC, to briefly describe it. To start with, the faculty that are hired in a tenure-track position are asked to form a faculty evaluation team. This is commonly referred to just as the FET on campus. The team includes at least one tenured faculty member and typically from their division
This is some of the faces who have helped us as part of this. We've got over here, if you can see my cursor, kind of a big, on my left of my screen, we've got some of our landscape crew. And then the folks in the orange there are city, well, they're community volunteers, actually. Katie Kasakie there on the right, she was very helpful in helping us get this designation. And she organized volunteers, and they have come down on a number of occasions over the years and helped us prune many of the young trees out in the corridor, which really helped them get a good start. We're really starting to see the rewards of that. The last couple of years, those trees have really taken off. So again, down there at the bottom is Grace Tree Service. And Sean, you can maybe see he's on the far left there, the tallest guy on the left, he's currently the owner of Grace Tree Service. And he came through with me a few years back, and he was really what got this ball rolling because he, when we were out doing kind of a safety check, annual safety check on the trees that they help us with, he recommended to me that we look into Tree Campus USA because he knew from conversation that we were already doing many of the things that were required to qualify. So he suggested I get ahold of Katie, and I did. And I don't know that I'll go too far into that other than to say getting ahold of Katie was one of the most rewarding things I've done because she really just jumped in and helped make things happen. And this whole process of Tree Campus USA has been a, has been an enlightening thing for me because I realized when you're doing the right thing, the people that can help you will find you. And I started getting phone calls and getting answers to questions I didn't even know I had yet. And that ball, I couldn't have stopped it. I wanted to. The community just jumped in and made that happen. So Katie's moved on to Spokane now, but Nick Goodwin has taken over, and he has been hugely helpful as well. So those are some of the folks who have helped make this happen. And the why of this is, I think, usually pretty easy to explain. And I think the next three slides will do a good job of that. And I'm gonna go ahead and read them because it sounds like there may be some people who can't see the screen. So as I move forward, I'll go ahead and read them, just in case there are people who can't see that. So why Tree Campus USA? And there's an APA survey there, which is American Physical Plant Association, which is a standard that we follow in the Facilities Department over here. And the survey of more than 16,000 students at 46 institutions of learning, 50% of the respondents agreed with the statement. When I first saw the campus, I knew it was the right college for me. And 2/3 of the respondents claimed the attractiveness of the college was either very important or essential to the college of their choice. I've always thought that was a good guiding principle for us as far as Tree Campus USA. Looks like they seem to care. And I think the next slide reinforces that. And if maybe you knew from the last time any of you saw this, so I'd like this one as well. And again, I will read. Iconic campus landscapes and the impact they have on students. The welcoming environment undoubtedly is undoubtedly important to attract prospective students and engage current students. But many campus leaders do not realize the full impact of the physical environment. BAV's enrollment services surveyed over 200,000 students in 2017 and found that the campus environment is the number one reason students choose to enroll at different institutions. More so than academic reputation, 12.9%, and cost at 11.5%. It's the campus environment, 13.6%, that drives students away or draws them in. When we are working on, I guess to say, when we're working on trees out there, I think it's time well spent. And that, when we found that, and that was very reassuring. So, and the next slide, you know, I promise you it's my last, and then we'll move on to Craig. It's my favorite slide of all time, and I think you'll see why. In fact, I've referred to it as the Super Bowl slide. And it really drives home what I've shared here, right here at NIC. So I'll move forward to that, and you'll see Emily. And every time I see that, it reminds me what we do here. I choose to attend North Idaho College because the campus is beautiful. And that came out in the nick now, a few years, I'm gonna say a few years ago. I don't remember exactly what year that was, but when I saw that, I was like, oh, my gosh, you know, we've won the Super Bowl because that statement really just drives a nail right down through what we do at North Idaho College in the Facilities Department. It drives a nail right down why we're here, and it pretty firmly adheres us to the mission of the college and our purpose. So anytime I feel that I've maybe forgotten that, all I have to do is pull out this quote from Emily and remind us why we're here and what we do. So with that said, I'm gonna introduce you, maybe some of you introduced you to Craig really quickly. He's our landscape supervisor and what I would refer to as an exceptional human. And in the interest of making sure that I do it justice, I wanted to write it down. And this is my quick intro for Craig, and then I'll let him explain to you some of the future plans and some of the things he's currently working on with his exceptional crew. Craig remains focused on the student experience and understands the relationship between his work and the outcomes of student recruitment, retention, and success. His commitment to students and others is genuine, and it reminds us all why we were here and what matters. Good work done by Craig and his exceptional team were on display after the windstorm on January 13. Craig and his team got to work quickly and efficiently to clean up after the devastating event and reminded us again what can get done if we work together. Under Craig's leadership, the landscape team turned what could have been a demoralizing set of circumstances into opportunity and a planned vision for the future of the park. In the theme of what Craig is all about, the plan includes visions of improved outdoor and spaces and other improvements that would support the campus community and events. Craig has an ingrained commitment to servant leadership and some really cool ideas. So Craig, if you're there, would you jump in?
Wow. Thanks, Bill, for those two kind words there. Chair, trustees, President Rick, faculty staff, community attendees, thank you for having us speak a little bit. I'm gonna call this celebrating success, Tree Campus Plus, because I've got the plus. You didn't have the plus, Bill. Last time I spoke, I had to follow Chris, and this time I gotta follow Chris and Bill. So I'm gonna do my best, folks. Big shoes to fill. Yeah, Bill did a great job kind of explaining Tree Campus USA, what it is, why we do it. Obviously, everything revolves around students, student success, and community engagement. Tonight, I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail into the work that's being done. And one of the biggest tools that we utilize as part of the Tree Campus program, which is our tree plotter. I'll touch on the windstorm, how that affected our campus, where we're at with cleanup efforts, some exciting things that we're doing to rebuild and renovate, kind of come back better and stronger, upcoming Arbor Day events, and all of that with an emphasis on students, success, community through increasing safety on campus, increasing study spaces, creating more engaging outdoor environments for all who attend and visit NIC. And with that being said, I'll first discuss our online tree plotter program real quickly. Each tree on campus is plotted online via a map of the campus, I think like Google Earth's. And each tree location is marked on that map, and any relevant data to that tree, such as DBH, the overall height of the tree, the health, anything, any concerns that we may have, all that gets logged into for each tree. And we can pull that information up with just a click of the mouse. Currently, we have about 95% of the tree data on our campus imported into that program. So we have about 1,600 trees. So it's a lot of work. I think maybe the trappings of seeing the signs around campuses that NIC, it's a cool campus, and you got cool trees. So here's your placard. And it's just, there's so much behind-the-scenes work that takes place. Also, that tree plotter program acts as kind of a health record for each tree, where we can accurately monitor the activity that's been performed on the tree and document the, you know, pest or any pruning that was done over the lifespan of that tree. And that proved to be a pretty valuable tool, especially during the windstorm where we needed tree data extrapolated rather quickly for insurance and other purposes. And so if you've walked around campus, you've seen that its landscape has kind of forever changed, and January was not kind to us and did her worst, so to speak. And it's just amazing to me how just a few hours of wind created just months and just total devastation and so much work. So I'm happy to say we're in the recovery and planning phase, at least in regards to landscape. And you're seeing some of that rebuilding process take place now in big ways. All of the damage from the initial storm in January's cleaned up. I think Lot A actually might be clean again, which is kind of nice. It was a staggering operation. And I think really, NIC really excelled on the cleanup efforts, keeping minimal impact to operations, getting campus open, getting students back on, and safely navigating the campus. So it's a great example of different teams coming together, working towards a common goal. And NIC really does this just as well as anybody. And I have numbers for statisticians out there. So as a result of the windstorm, we lost about 120 trees, plus trees now on campus and the levee in total. We continually monitor the remaining large pines. Just now, there are more exposures. We're looking for soil fissures around the base, things that may indicate any structural or potential damage. But I think we finally turned the corner, and I think, I'm happy to report, I don't see any further loss of tree life in the near future. One big takeaway from all of this was really eye-opening, and that is the importance of species diversity. So 95% of the trees that we lost were large pines. We lost about 20% total of the ponderosa pine population on campus. Ponderosas used to make up 45% of the total tree population, and now it's about 32%. So it was a great example of how pests and even a weather event can wipe out large numbers of any given tree. So we really want to include as much diversity in our tree species to guard against those types of losses. And so again, through the tree plotter program, we're able to look and understand this information and kind of see the story that the numbers start telling us. And you're probably wondering what happened to all the timber and the wood and countless piles of slash and everything. And most of the larger stuff was logged and milled, which netted NIC about $4,000, which went into a fund, which is now depleted for replacement trees, I'm happy to report. So we've got 22 new trees ready, purchased. A lot of them are onsite and ready to get planted, and much of that will happen over the course of this week, Friday and Saturday. Another cool thing that happened was that there was an outreach community, outreach group that came on and chopped up some wood and split it and distributed that to seniors in the area. So another great way how NIC was able to have impact into the community. There's a lot of local talent, sawyers, street climbers, the city of Coeur d'Alene Streets came in, and we continue to work with them, equipment operators, just worked tirelessly in getting NIC cleaned and back up and operational again. Even though we lost 120 trees, I think the trapping is, hey, let's go out and replace all these trees. We got 120 trees we need to, we need to plant. And I think the approach moving forward is identifying and key areas where we need increase in canopy coverage and making sure that we have the tree, the right tree in the right location. So diversity and strategic placement kind of rules the day in our decision-making process moving forward with, with planting of trees. So what's kind of the plan moving forward? You know, I thank everyone for their patience. You know, campus is a mess, and it caused a lot of devastation, takes a lot of planning and money and orchestrating to build back, especially where infrastructure was lost, like lighting, irrigation lines, electrical. A lot of concrete walks are smashed, irrigation control wires are damaged, and obviously buildings. It takes a lot of time, and I think you're seeing a lot of buildings finally getting at or near completion, and a lot of landscape projects are coming online. The first area we're kind of working in is known as the Headland Park. That's what we call it. That's kind of the southeast corner of campus. Seven new trees will be going in there Friday as part of our Arbor Day observation. There's gonna be a new path installed around some artwork that was in the grass with some river rock, new lawn, a couple of areas for benches with electrical power added, so you can charge your device. And so we've kind of created some more outdoor study spaces there, which is a word that I think we're gonna be here, creating efficiencies there, replacing control wires that were completely uprooted by trees. And we'll be starting that project after Art on the Green in August. We've also been working with Gizmo to create a tree walk around campus. So they're busy, just about made up our first six signs. So you'll be seeing those go out. And then every year, as part of our smart institutional goals, we'll be adding about six trees or so to that walk. Beach restrooms, big announcement here, they're getting remodeled, new paint inside and out, new plumbing, new paint, NIC gray and the red, so down with the brown. It's gonna be cool and awesome. We've got some new trash containers, metal enclosures. So we're kind of phasing out the Rubbermaid trash cans. I'm working with the art department. I think I saw Annie, you're there, we're working with Annie and some of the art students to try to get those vinyl wrapped with some cool vibrant colors and create a whole new experience down on the beach. It won't be like you're camping in the backwoods. It'll really highlight NIC, have our school colors out there, and make it fun and vibrant. So kind of picking, I'll close here with Brian, just kind of shameless plug for Arbor Day. So Friday's kind of our in-house observation for staff and faculty. If you want to show up Friday at 1:00 over in Headland at the Southeast Park, we're gonna be planting seven trees, and they're ginormous trees, so I need a lot of muscle. And we're gonna have our equipment out there, and maybe we'll see Chris in the skid steer, maybe. I really want to see that. JD, our resident tree guy in landscape, is gonna be, and he's a sitting member of the City Urban Forestry Committee too, which is pretty cool. He's gonna be giving a quick demonstration of how to plant trees. We'll break into teams and go out and, and go to work it dirty, have fun, hang out, and plant some trees. The second event, which I'm pretty stoked about, is our community event that's open to the public on Saturday, May 1. It's gonna be a drive-through event. So if you can't show up on Friday, you have no excuse. If you're wearing a suit or whatever, Saturday's for you. It'll start at 1:00 and end at 4:00 or until there's no more trees left. So once the trees are gone, the show's over. I'm not gonna dance or anything out there. Big shout out to Bobby, who volunteered. We'll have student athletes out there coming and helping out, the fire department. We'll have their engine out there handing out stickers for the kids. It's gonna be in the North Molestead Library parking lot. We've got 500 trees to give away, so we'll see how long that takes. First 500 vehicles get a free tree, a commemorative sticker, a giddy bag, and a swipe on a tablet for free. Free schwag. You guys, you gotta come out because I can't keep this stuff. I gotta give it away, and I need my office space back. So come out this Saturday. The grand prize will be a really nice Japanese maple tree that JD picked out. It's, it's, it's an awesome tree. So go on the NIC Facebook page, like and share that. That's how you get entered for that, for the Arbor Day event. Just share that with your friends. Our resident Batman will be there, I think, in his BatGator, fire department with the truck, as I mentioned. It's gonna be a fun event for the whole family and a great way for NIC to kind of engage and celebrate Arbor Day with our community. So I hope to see all of you guys there. That's kind of a snapshot. Sorry, it's kind of long, but that's what NIC is doing in the Landscape Services Department. You know, again, it's this collaborative effort of reaching out and working with other people from other departments to kind of change the way that we've done things in the past and, and make some cool, exciting changes to make this a more vibrant and inviting place than it already is and keep it the kind of jewel of Coeur d'Alene. And so I, that's all that I have. Thank you, guys, for having me on tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be more than, more than happy to take those.
Thank you very much. Chair Banducci says he can't talk. Has anyone verified that he's muted? But thank you for sharing very much. It's fascinating. It's cool.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if I'm muted. Am I muted?
We hear you, Kristi.
Oh, thank you. Well, if I could, I would just like to congratulate them and thank them. At our city council meeting, we had a brief discussion on Arbor Day, and the city wasn't really able to participate this year as much as they normally do. But they were so grateful to the NIC staff that is making this event happen and everything that will be able to do for the community. So congratulations to you and all your hard work.
Are we moving on to the next agenda topic?
Yeah, let's do that. All right, I'll take over. Is ASNC present?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Great. Welcome.
Awesome. Thank you. So before I start my report, since this is the last one that I am doing as the ASNC president, I just want to say thank you to the board for listening to me throughout this academic year. It has been a really great opportunity to get to celebrate the great work that ASNC is doing, and it has been a really great learning experience for me. So thank you. Now, on to the report. We've been doing a lot of tying up loose ends and trying to make sure that everything that we've been working on has been taken care of and that our next group is going to have a smooth transition. Some of our projects have been wrapping up, including work on the rose garden on NIC's campus. A few of our senators and some other volunteers will be planting a bunch of rose bushes and some dogwood trees to make the area more inviting and welcoming for students. Other projects, like the lighting on the beach volleyball court and the campus maps, are still underway, but they should be completed by the end of next week. So everything will be good to go for the fall semester. And some other things that we have been working on are, over the past two months, we've been working on amendments to our bylaws to just further raise our standards and expectations. So that is really exciting. And as well as working on plans to remodel the ASNC suite in the next academic year. Yesterday was our final board meeting of the semester, and we did pass resolutions regarding updates to the bylaws and the suite remodel. The plan for the remodel is to just open up the space and make it more dynamic and engaging for students to come interact with the student government and to be able to get to see what we're doing and just make the space a little bit better. So that is very exciting. We've been working on a transition letter for the new officers for things that we haven't completed, so they will have a running start. And finally, I am trying to go through this and be as concise as possible, we had our elections, and we have a new board. They were inducted yesterday. And on the call actually is the next ASNC president, Annie Vladovska. And I was hoping that I could take this opportunity to introduce her to the board, since she will be taking over for me. So Annie, if you are still here, you're welcome to say hi.
Hello, everyone. I'm Annie Vladovska. I'm international. I'll just say a little word, just a little bit about myself. I'm an international student and have been privileged for me to be part of ASNC and NIC. And I also want to use the opportunity to thank Trystee Wood for writing a support letter for me in summer 2019. Thank you, Trystee Wood.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Kai.
Awesome. Thank you, Annie. That is really all that I have for my report. I just want to say thank you again to the board. This has been a really great experience for me. And if you have any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Welcome to.
All right, are there any questions for Kai?
I just have one statement.
Go ahead, Greg.
Kai, great job this year, and good luck on your next adventures in leadership.
All right, thank you for that. The next report is the Faculty Assembly by Chris Pelchat.
Chair Banducci, I first wanted to start off with congratulations to Brian, Victor, and Blythe for a referral of tenure. That's a great achievement. I hope you take time to enjoy that. With spring comes opportunity for changing of the guard. And I, like Kai, this is my last Board of Trustees meeting where I will be presenting the Faculty Assembly report. So with that said, Chair Banducci, members of the board, President McLennan, and everyone else gathered here today, I provide you the Faculty Assembly report. So we started off our April meeting with approval of the minutes. And then during my chair report, I took care of a bunch of year-end business. One of the things that we have to do every spring is replace the leadership of all the standing committees of the college with the necessary faculty representatives. And so we had that slate prepared and voted on by the faculty, and it was passed unanimously. So that's all set up for next year. We moved into talking about the slate of candidates for the Executive Committee of Faculty Assembly. into talking about the slate of candidates for the Executive Committee of Faculty Assembly. And we had several seats running unopposed. And so those were voted right away through acclamation. And so your Faculty Assembly Chair that we'll be presenting to you will start in May, and that is Molly Mashad, who's a professor of English. We do have a runoff for treasurer between two folks and that vote will take place in May. So when Molly presents in May, you'll, you'll be introduced to the, the new Executive Committee for Assembly. We also prepared our slate of candidates for Senate representation and we still have one seat we're trying to, to fill with faculty. And so we didn't vote on any of those, but the hope is we'll have that one seat filled and then that slate voted on during the May meeting. Then we moved on to old business and we had some updates from our faculty advising leads and also several folks from the First Year Experienced Task Force. And then we moved on to some discussions in old business that had been started in previous months. During our March meeting, we had a short conversation about First Amendment rights and that conversation spilled over into some web-based conversation and then into this formal assembly meeting. And the conversation was kind of twofold, you know, faculty not sure how to have their voice heard as a citizen of Kootenay County versus a faculty member of North Idaho College. And then also some concerns about folks wanting to say things in the public but being kind of steered towards, steered a different direction. And that conversation resulted in a resolution I have for you all today about First Amendment rights. So I will read that now. "The North Idaho College Faculty Assembly affirms the free speech and fair comment rights of all employees at North Idaho College. And so long as no employee claims to represent the voice and will of the college when they do not have such authorization. Agrees that all members of NIC's community should be permitted to exercise these rights without reprimand from the institution, so as long as such speech also complies with all applicable laws and college policy." That was voted on and passed. And then we moved into an additional discussion about board ethics. So since our February special meeting of the Faculty Assembly, there's been continued discussion about the board's behavior and lack of publicly visible action to address the concerns of the faculty. And this conversation continued formally at the April Assembly. And that also resulted in an additional resolution on the matter. This one's titled Board Ethics. "The Faculty Assembly respectfully requests that the Board of Trustees restore the Board Conduct Policy 2.01.10 that they rescinded late fall 2020. The faculty and staff assemblies communicated this request in their earlier resolutions, yet the board has not taken action. As a result, the board has no guidelines or accountability for ethical behavior. Since the board rescinded this conduct policy, monthly business meetings have exhibited unprofessional behavior, with members at times becoming confrontational and with the business of the college not being accomplished in what should be a clear and organized process. This lack of professionalism reflects on the institution as a whole. reinstating the ethics policy until it is replaced by an updated policy would increase accountability, provide guidance on improved professional conduct, and restore some faith that the board is listening to the college it serves." After that discussion, we moved into new business. And under new business, we had some presentations from the Student Learning Outcomes Assessment Committee and some of the work that they're doing to wrap up spring. We also heard about the Open Educational Resource Initiative. We had an annual report by the Teaching and Learning Council about the Teaching and Learning Center work that's being conducted. And then we also were provided an overview of what commencement's going to look like in May. We wrapped up with Good Order. A bunch of people provided some things that were going on. We heard about the Writing Center Workshops, Spring Theater Productions, Student Art Exhibits, Semester of Success Program, and then also the Student Graphic Design Event that was held a couple of years ago. That is what I have for you for my final Assembly Report. I will take questions if the board has any.
Are there any questions for Chris?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Trystee Howard, go ahead.
Yes. All right. Chris, I, I'd like you to hopefully take this message back to your group. We have not forgotten about adopting a replacement policy, actually, for the one that was rescinded. I've been working on it with Michael Barnes and quite frankly, it's gotten a little slowed down because of commitments I had. I also want to remind everybody that we still have in place policies that deal with trustees' authority and responsibility, particularly 2.01.02 and 2.0, 2.01. And so we're not working in a vacuum. We still have those policies that control our conduct. And we're trying to come up with a, a better policy, but understanding also that maybe in the past, we've had a policy without having any procedures attached to it. So we're looking at modifying the policies to include a procedure. So this is an effort that's underway. We haven't forgotten about it. And hopefully we'll be presenting something to the board for their consideration in the future, in their future.
Thank you, Trystee Howard. I will send that message along.
Ken, thank you for sharing that update.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Trystee Wood.
Thank you. Chris, I would just like to thank you for your service this past year. It's been a difficult year and on a lot of different levels. And you've showed great leadership. And if you could possibly get the board those latest resolutions, that'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you and absolutely.
All right. If there's no further questions, we'll move on to Staff Assembly and Jeff Davis.
Thank you very much. Hope everyone can hear me just fine. Trystee Banducci, trustees, President McLennan, counsel, President's Cabinet, and colleagues and guests. Thank you very much. This will be a, a brief and hopefully informative report at our last Staff Assembly meeting, which are always a, a very great time. We, we go through the usual housekeeping, approval of minutes, and new employee introductions. Shout-outs, which are, are always fun for our, our staff. Our Sterling Silver Award winner, which timely, was Victor Begay, our latest tenured faculty member. So congratulations, Victor. We had also, once again, very timely guest speakers. Our constituency requested that Chris Martin give us some quick budget updates, which he is always happy to do, always engaging, always builds us a brand-new PowerPoint every time. And one of the focuses on the budget update, beside just the budget, was Meyer Health and Sciences and where we were going with that, but also the budget effects of the, the windstorm cleanup. And as always, Chris did a wonderful job of updating us on that piece, which segwayed wonderfully and actually coincidentally to our next guest speaker, who was Craig Betancourt. It, I, I wish everyone could have been there. Not only our staff, our faculty, but our community could have been there. As, as you heard before, Craig is, is amazing at his job. And it came in a very timely way in that outside of the Student Union Building, right outside the offices of, of Advising, where I work, we were hearing the thump of trees hitting the ground. And I received some concern. What's happening? We just had dozens and dozens of trees fall down. Why are we cutting more down? And Craig was so great about assuring us that this is what had to happen and why, and how we track that, and how those trees were going to be replaced. And, and the diversity in the trees and, and the thoughtfulness that went so far beyond what all of us really knew about NIC's grounds, where, you know, we all have homes, we all have trees, and we think this is just natural and, and we try to tend them the best we can. We did not really understand the full intentionality as, as a group. I mean, there are certain folks that certainly did. But it was amazing to hear how not only were we honoring the past of NIC, but really looking toward the future. It, it was, it was tremendous. And we were all so happy and I received so many comments about how, oh, this is what is going on outside in our grounds. And, and we're so excited and we understand so much more about the design that goes into the ground. So kudos to Bill and Craig and everybody else on that team. We had our usual Senate Report, President's Advisory Council. Good of the Order included a first reading of an amendment to our Congress, our Constitution that will include, hopefully as this moves forward, a parliamentarian as part of our Staff Executive Committee. Under our Staff Assembly Forum, we had employee appreciation awards. The nominations have been sent out. I, I know as many board members as can be there and, and staff and faculty will be at our awards ceremony that's upcoming, because that's always really the best time for NIC. It, it brings us together so well. Committee signups. Every year, we have to get all of our committees worked out, straightened out, and ready to put boots on the ground in the fall. And staff and Senate positions and elections, all of which is a lot of hard, detailed work on behalf of our team. I, I would say this is my very last meeting, but it's not, actually. I will be attending the next board meeting and introducing you to who will become our new Staff Executive Chair. So if there are any questions, I would be happy to entertain those.
Board, are there any questions for Jeff? All right. Jeff, I'm not hearing any, so thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Next is the Senate with Steve Kurtz.
Good evening, Chair Banducci, Board of Trustees, Dr. McLennan, and other distinguished guests. The Senate met on April 15th. And thanks to Max Mendez for his role as Presiding Officer during the meeting, as I had an accreditation assignment. In old business, the Senate gave final approval for the Office of Finance and Facilities Operations Policy that was presented by Chris Martin. The Senate also second-read and approved revisions to the Constitution and bylaws, including how vacant positions are filled, the updating of roles of past Chair, Chair, Parliamentarian, and corresponding Secretary, the updates with language with notification requirements for regular and special meetings. The final item under old business was a website redesign Subcommittee Update led by Ken Wardensky, Max, and also included Max Mendez, Jeff Carr, Teresa Henderson, and Melissa Mulvaney. And they provide an update to the Senate. The next meeting occurs as May 13th. That's the reorganization meeting. Elections will take place with Chair, Vice Chair, corresponding Secretary, and Parliamentarian. The website redesign Subcommittee will provide an update under old business. And under new business, we're looking forward to hearing from Karen Hubbard as she presents the, the Employee Benefits Policy and Procedure 3.0217. And it's been quite a while since that policy has been revised. Chair Banducci, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any questions for Steve, please? All right. Steve, I'm not hearing any. Thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome, sir.
I'm gonna take one moment. Greg, I want to thank you for jumping in when I went offline. I had a phone go down on me and I'm using a phone for audio both coming and going. So I had to get a backup phone and get it, and it's plugged in right now and, and I was able to get back in. So anyway, I appreciate you stepping up and covering for me there for the, for the moments I might go. It was incomunicado. The next thing on the agenda is the President's Report from Dr. McLennan. Greg, if you're ready, do it, please.
Thank you. I just want to add my congratulations to the three tenure, no longer tenure candidates, the tenured faculty, Brian, Victor, and Blythe. It's been said already, the amount of effort that goes into this process, both by the candidates and the faculty and leadership that take place in the entire process. And it's one of the stable features of higher education that helps ensure quality and outstanding academic performance. And so, again, just want to extend my congratulations. I also want to add my appreciation to the constituent leaders. I, I had a chance to meet with them earlier this week and, and thank them personally for the service they've given to the institution. I want to do so publicly this evening. It's already been mentioned, this has been a very difficult year on many levels. And my interaction with these campus leaders, I have only found them to be the utmost professional and caring and careful representatives of the constituents that they represent. They brought difficult issues and were very engaged in resolution and problem solving throughout the entire time of their service. So, you know, when that works well, it, it helps the institution move forward. And these four individuals have done an outstanding job. So thank you very much. There's been a lot of interest in athletics over the last several months, so I thought I'd take a few minutes and just talk a little bit about that in my report. All teams are currently competing. Well, sort of. I'll get to that in a second. With the exception of wrestling, who just, which just finished their national competition and, and finished in sixth place, want to congratulate our new national champion, Sal Silves, and the five All-Americans, and especially Coach Sabali and Lule on just a very successful season. A season we didn't think we were going to have. And congratulations to them. Competitions for all the other teams continue through May 16th. Currently, the men's basketball team and women's volleyball teams are completing a quarantine, having experienced positive COVID cases, two on the men's basketball team and one on the volleyball team. They'll resume competition next week after completing institutional NWHAC and CDC protocol. Recruiting, there's been some concern about recruiting for athletics. It's going very well for all programs, especially the fall sports competition this year. Of course, did not, did not count as a year of eligibility. So many of our sophomores are returning next year and many teams have nearly filled their roster already for next year. A number of prospective athletes have been visiting the campus and returning athletes are registering for fall courses as we would hope and expect. The NIC Booster Club Committee is meeting on a monthly basis and they're planning a golf tournament in June and the three-on-three basketball tournament in late August. The updated competition schedule, it's on the Athletic Department website, and fans are allowed up to 40% capacity and following protocols. And so we, we do want to see our fans in attendance. And then lastly, on athletics, I just want to congratulate our head, longtime head athletic trainer, Randy Boswell, for his recent induction into the NJCAA Wrestling Hall of Fame. Congratulations, Randy. A little bit on COVID. You know, we continue to follow the CDC guidelines. There's a couple changes this week regarding outdoor activity. We're taking a look at that. We're taking a look at that. We've had access to Valt testing, which is the saliva test, the quick turnaround test, which, and thousands of them, thanks to our relationship with Panhandle Health. We've been implementing weekly testing of our student athletes, coaches, and other student population, students in the residence hall, for example, and employees when requested. What this allows us to do is to find positive cases and rapidly quarantine folks to help prevent our students unknowingly spread COVID-19 to others. And this just continues to be a great resource for us and we build a very strong relationship with Panhandle Health and the state. And importantly, not all colleges have this, access to this opportunity for such a quick turnaround and regular testing. We're hosting vaccine clinics on our main campus in the DeArma Building and at the Parker Technical Education Center. Again, this is working in partnership with Panhandle Health. The National Guard is involved. We were the first employer slash community outreach site for these mobile vaccination teams. And obviously, this is allowing us to bring vaccinations to our community, but also to, and importantly, to students, employees, their families as well. And this one, I think, is one I just learned about recently. Thank you to Chris Martin and the Area Agency on Aging. We've created an outreach program and teamed up with Coeur d'Alene Fire Department this past month to offer free in-home COVID-19 vaccinations. The service has been offered to homebound senior citizens and their direct care providers. Because, you know, they're obviously, many are homebound and unable to make it to other vaccine locations. In total, in just the one month, a little over a month that we've been involved in this, we vaccinated almost 150 seniors in the five northern counties. And we're getting a lot of gratitude from our community for that. With respect to, let's see. Oh, I want to talk a little bit about Idaho Codes. That's a program that we're going to be running this summer for students grades seven to 12. I had the opportunity to be a part of the Governor's News Conference that was held on Monday that launched version 2.0 of Idaho Codes. And what this does, it provides access to coding foundations. It's a course that offers 120 hours of professional-grade computer science curriculum in HTML, CSS, and JavaScript. We're going to be offering this course over the summer on our main campus. And again, this is at no cost to students. So we're hoping to get a lot of participation there. And with concern to community outreach and education about North Idaho College, Dr. Burns and our Dean of Instruction Workforce, Kristi Doyle, and Director of Workforce Training and Community Education, Vicki Isaacson and I will be presenting, taking a deep dive into workforce training and economic development with the Coeur d'Alene Area Economic Development Corporation and Jobs Plus. And we'll be doing that Tuesday morning, early in the morning on May 4th. And lastly, I just want to touch on the accreditation issue that I forwarded the Board a letter yesterday evening that I received from Dr. Sunny Ramaswamy, President of the Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities. The letter is intended to initiate an investigation of complaints received and related reports in the media, specifically related to activities of the Board of Trustees, institutional and board policies, and importantly, evidence that we are, we have appropriate policies and procedures in place and that they're being followed. We have 45 days from the date of receipt to respond to that letter of inquiry. And I have tasked the Executive Accreditation and Planning Team to take the lead on this. I just want to mention here that, however, this investigation centers primarily on board policy and of course, conduct. So development of our response is going to require active board engagement. And I'll have more to follow on that. That concludes my report. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or comment on any item that the Board would like me to.
Are there any questions for Dr. McLennan? All right. I'm not hearing any. The next item on the agenda is the K-Tech Report. And as mentioned earlier, Trustee Barnes is unavailable tonight. So we will move on to Old Business, Tab 1, Karen Hubbard.
Good evening, Chair Banducci and trustees. Tonight, I'm presenting for a second reading, Policy 3.04.06, Leave Without Pay. And as mentioned in the first reading last month, along with the revision of this policy, we are also proposing to rescind Policies 3.04.06.01 and 3.04.07, both of which pertain directly to leaves without pay. These were both brief policies and the relevant content has been incorporated into the revised version that you have on Leave Without Pay today. So that information, all that information relates to Leave Without Pay now would be contained in one single policy. And as this is the second reading of this policy, I'm requesting that the Board consider a motion to adopt the proposed revisions to this policy and to rescind the aforementioned policies. And with that, I would stand for any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Karen?
I have one.
Trustee Mackenzie.
I just want to comment that the leave of absence without pay for educational purposes has been in place since 98. And it, I find it interesting that there's two separate policies. One to address leave without pay for educational purposes and also for leave without pay for, I would assume, more sensitive matters. Just a comment. Is there any specific theory on why there was two separate policies to begin with 20 years ago? Or 23 years ago?
Anything on my part would be speculation. I really have no insight into that to offer.
Yeah, okay. Sorry for bad questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Trustee Wood, go ahead.
I'd make a motion to approve the revised Leave Without Pay Policy 3.04.06 and rescind Policies 3.04.06.01 and 3.04.07.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second the motion. Who's again, Ken Howard?
All right, Trustee Howard. Do we, do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, do you have?
Since our last meeting, I've had time to reflect on Karen's explanation of the policy and the statements made by Trustee Howard. Originally, I was a little concerned about rescinding policy that would remove board from it. But I think it does clearly fall under operations. And so I am comfortable at this time to move forward.
All right. I also had that concern. I guess, I do have a question now, curiosity. I wasn't aware of the other policy. Is there, is there a reason that these policies couldn't be combined to eliminate an additional policy? Or are they incompatible? The two different types of leave without pay?
Chair Banducci, trustees, that is the proposal that we're bringing to you tonight, is to incorporate those other two policies into this, this single leave without pay policy so that Leave Without Pay for Educational Purposes would be among the reasons why an employee might request a leave without pay under the single new Leave Without Pay policy.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood that because the other one was about the health insurance. And when I looked at the new policy, that's on page two at the top, in red. And so, so when we're talking about the leave without pay, where it was specifically spelled out as educational purposes, the idea of the new policy is both, as great we use the term, sensitive issues, personal, medical, whatever, inclusive also of what we consider educational purposes. So by definition, just an overall umbrella, any type of leave without pay then. So we don't need to specify the type.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly. All right, thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
I know it's on me right now. And I've been struggling with this because, again, I'm not sure I like to see power taken away from the Board. And I was given that input that I want to keep some sort of Board involvement in that. It says Board approval, but by practice, we've been having it just passed through the Board Chair. And we recently had one of those with President McLennan had brought that to me and presented the information and it truly made sense to approve and to do it. So I'm a little bit torn since I've just seen it in practice.
Might I provide some thoughts or are we solely voting time?
Yeah, I would say go ahead and provide thoughts.
Okay, well, if anything, I'll just justify my name. I would just like to say, as I read the policy right now, Leave Without Pay for Educational Purposes doesn't necessarily come to mind as with the two ones that is explicit for the other ones. And I'm aware sabbaticals can also be used to gain higher educational degrees, but it basically encourages employees to pursue both paths for, if they were not to obtain a sabbatical. That it basically, I don't know, I guess it nudges them to where it's more explicit, is what I'm thinking.
All right. Appreciate your thoughts.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Trustee Howard.
Yeah, I think it really is kind of our responsibility, if we're going to reject this, to at least give them some guidance on why we're rejecting it and how it might be cured, rather than just have them go back without some guidance on how to, what our objections are and how they might be cured. So to the extent that we can, it would be helpful, I think, at this juncture to kind of lay out a corrective action that would be acceptable to the Board, or at least to the members of the Board objecting, so that they can go back with some guidance.
Fair enough. I think that's a good suggestion, sir. Well, here's, here's my thoughts on this. It's just my thoughts. I would like, when I look at this Leave Without Pay, the very first paragraph that was struck talks about the Employees Unit or Program, approved by the Employees Administrative Superiors, the President, and the Board of Trustees is required. Basically, that's a chain of command. And again, as I stated in practice, my understanding, and we just did it recently, is that on behalf of the Board of Trustees, without objection by the other Board members, that the Board Chair had, whether that's me, you, Kristi, you know, anybody that's been Board Chair, has gone ahead and reviewed the package presented by the President and has had the authority on behalf of the Board to agree or disagree, concur or not. Again, just recently had one of those, I wholeheartedly concurred. It seemed to make sense, reviewing the impact on the employee and the college. So I guess I'm going to vote nay. And the guidance I would provide is I would still like to have the Board as the ultimate decider on this. And the context, a reminder that I'd like to see is that the Board is still the final authority, but we can continue the current practice of the Board President, whoever that might be, acting on behalf of the Board as long as there's no objections by the other Board members. That would be, don't rest in doubt. Yes, Trustee Wood.
So I guess my feedback on the policy would be, if we decide to leave it in the hands of the Board, I don't have any personal objection to you deciding, Todd. I don't have any concerns with that at all. What I would be concerned about, though, is if we left it just in the Board Chair's hands. We never really know. It could be me, it could be Ken, it could be whoever. What if we have a personal conflict with the employee that has requested this? And for some reason, we find ourselves in a situation of having to deny it. I think it kind of puts the Board in an awkward spot. So rather than just the Chair, it might be advisable that it would come to the full Board.
I'd be fine with that. Honestly, I'm amenable either way. If you think that makes more sense. Ken, Greg, do you have any thoughts on that? Would you, if we bring that continuing as we do to the Board, to bring it to the full Board?
Mr. Chair? If we can get the policy revised in a way that the administration feels is more usable, I suspect. I'm not going to object to that, so if that condition's in there, I'm not going to object to it. But I think this still smacks of the Board being involved in really administrative duties, dealing with individual employees and their needs. And I don't think that's within our overall purview. So I still have an overall policy objection to us being included in it. But I want to get, see something get done on this. And so I wouldn't object to the revisions that you suggested.
Kristi, can I say one thing on this? And I'm okay with the whole Board. I think one of the reasons, and maybe this is something we could say, it comes with the whole Board, and I guess the Board always has discretion, because I think there was a concern that if there was an issue of timeliness, if the entire Board couldn't get together, or convene, or whatever, that potentially the Board Chair could act on behalf of the Board through some sort of, maybe some sort of, maybe we could do that through some sort of coordination process or something. So I'm not sure, not sure exactly what that looks like. But I think that was some of the thought process of why maybe the Board Chair was kind of, was doing that. But we can bring it to the full Board. And if we get in a position where, for whatever reason, there's a timeliness concern or issue, if something has to be, hopefully that will never be the case, then we can adjust a little bit on the fly, I guess, as we need to.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would, I agree with Mr. Howard's assessment that in the spirit of looking for middle ground, I would agree to some of those suggestions.
Okay.
Provide a quick idea?
Trustee Mackenzie, yes, please.
To address Trustee Wood's concern of personnel differences, mate, we have right in there the, with the concurrence of the Board Chair. And then if the Board Chair was to deny that, then it would go before the whole Board to officially deny. But if the Board Chair concurs, then it would not go to the whole Board. And that's just my thoughts, so you can chew on that as you rewrite this. And also, I'd like to have the actual wordings in there for "pay for educational purposes", so that comes to mind when people see this as an option.
Mr. Chair? Go ahead, Kristi.
Yeah, I think I did a couple of voices. Trustee Wood, please.
I just didn't understand that last point by Trustee Mackenzie. I'm not sure I understand that. So I guess we'd have to see it in writing and brought back to us to see if that made sense.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Trustee Howard, yes, go ahead.
I guess I just wanted to ask Karen, who has been listening to this discussion, do you think you have enough information to make revisions and re-present them to the Board?
Trustee Howard, thank you. I think I do, yes.
Well, I don't, I don't know if this might require going back through the Senate. And you might advise us on that as to whether or not these revisions would require that procedure.
Trustee Howard, I'd like to address that.
Trustee Howard, I'd like to address that. If that's okay.
Yes.
So I really do appreciate the discussion that's taking place. I do want to, I do feel that I need to, because it's my role to do this. The policy that has been brought to you with the location of the decision-making being with the administration is the policy that has come to you. If it comes back to the college, I will not be forwarding a policy that has board-level control, and let me explain why I say that. I'm sure you're quite familiar now with, through several email exchanges, about my thoughts on board role and president's role in operational decision-making. This is clearly an operational decision-making, similar to the discussion we had earlier this evening in closed session on a personnel matter, and the reason that the board is not involved in the detail information about the specifics of the case. When you talk about timeliness of a decision, I think that could be information for the board in terms of, well, okay, we have a policy and a procedure that allows the administration to make these decisions that is in accordance with the policy and the procedure. If the board at some point didn't feel that the policy and the procedure was fulfilling the board's wishes, then it could address it through that mechanism. But the fact that you're going to make a personnel decision that is rightly placed within the administrative structure is not a recommendation that will be coming forward for me. It violates board policy, it violates the contractual relationship that I have with the board, and I'd be happy to discuss that further with you, but the recommendation that you have, unless there are substantive changes in the policy itself beyond the decision-making authority, is the policy that will be coming to the board. So if the board chooses to do something different, I leave that in your hands at this point.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Wood.
Thank you, thank you, President McLennan. You know, you make some very valid points, and we are struggling with this. You had already mentioned in your president's report that we have an accreditation review to deal with. So I would guess I would ask Mr. Lyon, if two trustees are voting in favor of the policy and two are not, does it just die? And where do we go from there? Because I was looking for common ground, but I do realize that I need to stay the course and make sure that we're not getting involved in operations.
Mr. Chairman, trustees.
Mr. Lyons, yes.
We have a, if we have a two-two vote, we do not have passage of this, so right now it is, there is no, the board has not passed on the requested motion, so that's the status. It can come back again when we have a full board, perhaps for another decision, or up to the administration to choose whether they want to resubmit it.
Then I, this is, this is Todd, I think I'd like to have the opportunity to think about this some more, chew on it some more, and think about it. What's interesting is, once we talk about operations, and what's operational, and there's been myriad of thoughts, and even some different definitions of what that entails, and this is an example of one that, for the, far as I know, for the life of this policy, the trustees were a part of the decision-making. So that either means this has been an error and wrong, whoever did this was wrong in the first place, and it's been wrong all along by all the presidents in succession, and everybody all along, or we now have a new definition of what falls under operations. And there's been a few of those things in my nine, almost eight and a half years on this board, so I look at that, and I have to think about that, and think about what's the precedent, and what were they thinking when, you know, things like sabbaticals, or leave without pay, or different things were under the jurisdiction of the trustees, and why that was, or how that came to be, and now we look at them, and then we're saying, well, now that's inappropriate. And so I gotta think about what has changed, or what's the paradigm shift, or was that just an error all along, and after all these years, now we're just finally correcting it, or if there was some reasons and rationale behind that. So I'm gonna stick with my nay vote for the moment. I would like to, essentially, I guess we're gonna table this at this time with the two-two vote, and I'm gonna...
Trustee Vanducci, I have just one correction I need to make. So to your first comment, yes, I do believe it was an error to be, for this particular policy to be, have board approval included in it, so that'll set that aside. The, with respect to the sabbatical approval process, that has never been in board policy. It was a practice that occurred in procedure, but it was never embedded in the board policy, so it's never been a policy-permissive or a policy-enabled action for the board. Just wanna make sure that's clear.
Just, okay, I appreciate that. To my recollection, when I was initially on the board, sabbaticals were brought in front of us for approval, and at some point that transitioned, and they were no longer brought in front of us, so...
That's correct, but the actual policy language did not include that.
And that makes it even more interesting, that if the policy wasn't supporting that action, but yet we were doing it in practice, and there's probably a whole story to that, so we don't need to go down that road, but that makes it even more interesting that was how we were doing it, even though it wasn't formalized in a policy. So maybe a discussion some other day.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Trustee Howard.
Yeah, where we're at now is we got a two-two vote, two against and two for. I don't know that we need to table this, this motion just doesn't move forward, and they can bring it back and put it on an agenda at a future date.
Yes, that can be, I'm not always saying it should be tabled at this time. Yeah. All right. Unless there's any other questions or comments, I'm gonna go ahead and move along to the next agenda item. We've already addressed tab two, the award of tenure, the fulfillment of tenure on the three instructors tonight. That will take us to tab three, which will be the first reading of the FY22 general fund operating budget, and Chris Martin, if you're prepared, would you please start, sir?
Mr. Vanderduche, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity, just to come before you and share the first reading of the budget. I'm hoping you're seeing a screen that shows the North Idaho College 2020 budget. So to discuss the revenue this evening, just to start out with, looking at where we're proposing to go for FY22, a couple of things to note, that this revenue budget is a 3.84% increase over last year, which is $1.9 million, and a big portion of that is made up of state appropriations, and wanna highlight one thing here specifically, is we've talked a lot about the 5% holdback we experienced last year. This includes a restoration of the 5% holdback. So as we walk through revenue, just a few things to note, we have not proposed a tuition increase for next fiscal year for any classification of students. We are forecasting a 3% decline in enrollment that will have around a $300,000 impact for next fiscal year. Again, the state funds, it's very positive news this year, the restoration of the 5% holdback in the general fund is $621,300, and there's also a change this year of an increase of $543,900. And that includes primarily the CEC support from the state, the CEC is the change in employee compensation, there's a 2% CEC from the state, there's a change for employee healthcare, there's also a positive enrollment workload adjustment factored in for next fiscal year, around $126,000, and that's a really positive move, enrollment workload adjustment, as you may know, is how the college is paid for enrollment, and we're seeing positive EWA this year, which is a good sign. Inside of that $543,000 also includes $200,000 the governor recommended in support of expanding our nursing program at North Idaho College. On the CTE side, or the career technical education side, again, there's a restoration of the 5% holdback of approximately $287,000, as well as a change this year of $113,700 to the positive, and that again includes the support for CEC and benefit change for CTE-funded employees. On the property tax base for this upcoming year, we are not suggesting any increase to taxes, other than taking the new property on the rolls, which would be $415,000. We made a couple of other adjustments to revenue to get to the final bottom line for this upcoming fiscal year, a couple to note, primarily, there's some estimated salary salvage that we're capturing for open positions throughout the year, next fiscal year, but also wanna note that we are removing the fund balance transfer that was built into the base of this year's budget of $1.1 million. And just as a reminder, we're not gonna end up using that this year, but it was in there as a safety guard, not knowing how we would be impacted by fall enrollment due to COVID-19. So with that, that brings us to a total revenue for next fiscal year for the projection, $49.5 million. Again, that's a 3.84% increase over the prior year. Chair Vanducci, I'm happy to go slide by slide, but I wanted to open it up for questions, if there were, or I can continue and go straight through, whatever the will of the board.
You know, Chris, if it works for you to stay fluid in your presentation, to take a pause after each slide and offer, that would be just fine, if that works for you, I don't wanna disrupt your flow, but if you can accommodate that. So at this point, what we can do, rather than be informal about this, when you get done with each slide, if you'd like to just ask if there's a question, that would be just fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Chris.
Go ahead, Trustee Wood.
Thank you. Oh, Chris, first of all, thank you for the one-on-one budget meetings that helped tremendously, so we've already had a lot of time with these numbers and some great explanation. But just real quick, on your first tab, on your first slide, I forgot to ask you in our meeting, is that liquor tax, is that just a placeholder number?
It's actually not. Trustee Wood, that's actually what we get each year, that $200,000 is a set amount that each community college gets.
Okay, thank you.
And Chris, that's different than the out-of-state, out-of-district tuition, excuse me, that each of the counties have to pony up, which comes back from their liquor money, right? So there's a second component of liquor money that we're getting, but it's under a different category.
Chair Vanducci, you're correct, you're correct. So this piece here comes directly to the college because we are the taxing district. So Cootney County, we get that $200,000 of liquor tax that's generated from Cootney County because we are a taxing district. The other counties, they do use their liquor tax dollars to fund the county tuition payments for their students who choose to come to North Idaho College.
It's kind of ironic, because we are the taxing district, Cootney County has a tendency to drink a couple of drinks, so we get quite, there's quite a bit of that revenue that we're not having to pay it out to others, and some of the counties maybe don't survive as much, sometimes that actually can not even cover their debt, it sounds like, so it could be actually a negative for them, if I understood that correctly, depending on how many kids they have in the different schools and stuff.
You're correct.
So, that's kind of ironic, we're a little flush compared to many. Chris, I have one question, that's kind of an overarching question, I'm gonna ask it now, and then you can kind of point it out to me as you go along, and I did not ask this at the trustee previews. I've been thinking about it, I know we've got the budget workshop, so that's why I'm gonna ask it now, and then maybe allow you guys to be able to speak to it at the budget workshop that I know we're trying to schedule. One of the things I can't see here, because of the way it's embedded, is I can't see athletics. And I guess I'm interested in some information on athletics, and I'll try to be brief on the backstory, but we changed conferences and made some adjustments a few years ago, and part of the genesis, part of the reason behind that was that we were going to realize some savings, and there were some other reasons why it was made, but that was one of the things that it was sold on. And so I'm curious to see, like, the last, I don't know if it's gotta be five years or what, but I'd like to see the last year or two when we were in the NJCAA and the SWAC, and versus now in the NWhac. And I wanna be able to account for that, and see those numbers, and see, first off, where are we at in funding our athletics? Two, how does that compare to where we were, and what savings have we actually realized? And I'm just wondering, part of the level now, and I wanna take it into account too, because right now, we've got some savings that will show up on the books, but that's because we have a few less coaches. We've lost that third coach with wrestling, I believe we've lost the assistant coach for women's basketball, so I wanna account for those too, because I want it to be a little more of an apples-to-apples, as to, I wanna see, you know, our travel and some of those budgets up. I guess it's a little near and dear to my heart and athletics, and I'm kinda curious to where are we at, how are we funding our programs, and how did this play out? And I say that because Christie and I were the two dissenting votes, it was a three-two vote when we changed conferences, and Christie's a supporter of athletics also. Sorry, Christie, I'm speaking for you, I don't mean to do that, sorry.
No, that's all right.
Historically, you've been a real supporter of athletics, and you and I worked very closely on that, and spent a lot of time together, and looked at it, and we presented our position and kind of our case, if you will, and we were outvoted three to. And so now I wanna, I'm interested to see how that has played out, now that we, I believe we have enough time now that we can look at it and be able to, to be able to assess it a little bit. So that's something I would like some information on, and maybe we could take a peek at that at the workshop, or if you want to give that to me in advance, and I can, you know, if everybody wants the information, that's great, but at least for me, I'd greatly appreciate it, and I'd be happy to look at it, either at the workshop or in advance, or, you know, whatever gives you appropriate time to be able to put that together.
Mr. Chair, one of the things, one of the things that we requested, Mr. Chair, and we actually had this a few years ago, because we did that, almost this identical request, we wanted to see the comparison in conference changes and whether we had saved money, but one thing that we asked for, and I would ask for again, if it's going to be brought forward, we just wanna look at seat time, because that was part of the discussion, is how much seat time are we losing by being at these away conferences, and we wanted to be able to compare that again. So I would ask for that as well.
Oh, that's a good question, you bet, but I have no problem with that, again, as I said, the financial consideration was certainly a driver because of our budget and budget pressures and things like that, but as I said, there were other considerations, one of which was seat time, contact time. And again, I have a, I do have a tremendous appreciation for that. I played baseball in the spring at a Division One school, we played 60 games over a period of a few months, and I went to a school in Colorado where we couldn't play at home for the first month, and we traveled, and then in our conference, we traveled all over, we were, conference that was all over the West Coast, you know, and so, yeah, it could be a real challenge. I remember sitting at a Holiday Inn, trying to take a graded review, you know, a term exam, being proctored by one of my assistant coaches, not ideal.
Mr. Chair.
So we can look at all that.
Mr. Chair, yeah, could I request that, you know, we put this on an agenda in the future and move on with the budget presentation here? I appreciate that this is a topic of great interest, but it really needs more detail than we can give it here, and we need to move on.
Oh, actually, sir, I was ready to move on, I was just making the request, I was asking a question, making a request, Christie adding to it, Ken, you're right, we're moving on right now. Chris, if you would, please.
Absolutely. Duly noted, Chair Vanducci, and we do have that data, and we can provide that at the workshop. You are right, just to clarify, this will not show up in this because it's actually in a separate fund, and we focus most closely on general fund for the overall budget, and so there's a transfer line where we transfer money out to support athletics in a different fund, but we can provide that detail at the workshop. Moving on to expenses, just looking from a high level here, without any impact to salary adjustments for this next fiscal year, the overall expenditures for the college went up by 1% or $496,000. So you'll see, before we talk about anything below the line there, we've got $1.4 million of revenue over expenses or additional funds, if you will. When we talk about the impact of salary impacts and initiatives... When we talk about the impact of salary impacts and initiatives, want to walk through that briefly. We have proposed a step increase for F Y twenty-two. You'll see the price tag there, four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, along with the associated benefits of seventy-nine thousand six thirty-six. We have proposed a part-time increase that would be close to seventy-nine thousand dollars. And then the impact of the benefits there is six thousand seven hundred and seventy-two. We've set aside three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the proposal for initiatives. And those, those are things that we don't have all the details for totally today. Those same things that are still in the works briefly, those initiatives include support for enrollment activities of students going into next fiscal year and throughout, as well as support for starting, you've heard about this from Dean Doyle and others, the aerospace apprenticeship program and providing some support for that as that review and investigation and launch continues. And then as well for some of the entrepreneurship and innovation initiatives that are happening within the Headland Building, providing support for those initiatives. There's a placeholder here for the salary study implementation, approximately four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That, as we remember from the last board meeting, the last workshop is still ongoing. This is just a placeholder with money set aside for that as that comes forward. Any questions on this page?
Mr. Chair. Chris?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Howard, go ahead.
Yeah, where is the updated salary comparison? They said it would only take a week or two, and it's been over that. What's going on?
I'll defer to, to my colleague Karen Hubbard for more details on that. I believe it's coming the first week of May, but Karen, do you have other details that you'd like to share?
That's correct. I, I did hear just this week that Evergreen is, is still obtaining, working on obtaining the data that's been requested. They were anticipating that they would, would have the data at, at the beginning of May, I believe by the end of, I want to say the first week, week and a half of May.
Okay. I mean, from my perspective, that's something I would like to see before I am asked to vote on a budget. And if it comes in, you know, a day before the next, the second reading, I'm going to have a difficult time voting on the budget, quite frankly.
Trustee Vanducci, Trustee Howard.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
So, yeah, and it, because, because some of the comparators did not participate in their original survey, that's, that's what's taking the time now. We, like Karen said, we anticipate getting this back early in May. And as soon as we do, we've got draft recommendations already put up. We want, we put together. We want to see what those recommendations would look like in relation to this data, how different it is from the, the larger set of data we've already received. And those, that, that, that structure of those recommendations will come to the board as early in May as we possibly can get them to you.
Thank you.
Um, Rick, just a quick question.
Go ahead.
Since, since the budget proposal, and this is only the first reading, and of course we'll have a workshop and then a second reading. But since we are pressed really for time on setting tuition, according to your proposal here, I would think that we don't need to pass this budget in May. We could even go as late as June and make sure we have all the information. And I am a little concerned about that study being adapted and changed. And so I'll want some time to review that. So I'm just suggesting that we don't have to have anything done by the end of May.
Chair Vanducci, if I can make a request?
Certainly, Trustee McKenzie.
I'd like to see the, maybe at the budget workshop or sometime in the future, though, the strategic budget initiatives. I think there's three topics in there that, initiatives, four initiatives. I was just hoping to see an estimate dedicated towards each initiative. Or?
Thank you. That's very helpful to, to know. Trustee McKenzie, thank you. Moving on here, just a note on approvals. We will need to do next month of an approval of the tuition and fees, even though it's not a tuition increase. If we could still put that, keep that on our radar, we still need to set tuition and fees. And so there's some changes there that we'll be bringing forward.
Thank you.
Just, just a note here for next year's operating budget, just want to highlight, we are generally around seventy percent of our total budget is personnel costs. We're right in line with that again for F Y twenty-two. That's really the, the important thing to note here for the trustees. We, we try really hard to stay around that percentage point there. Just wanted to share a little bit about property taxes. I'll walk through this briefly. We had a chance to walk through this in full with, with each of you during the one-on-ones. But just kind of laying up the, the property tax timeline and how that works for North Idaho College. As part of our budget setting process, the board actually determines an amount that we're requesting each, each year in, in taxes. And that goes to the county and the county actually calculates a levy rate based off of, of that information. And so just briefly, a little, a little history here for, for everyone that looks at how North Idaho College has handled taxes over the last several years. But if we look at this last year, F Y twenty-one, we're currently, currently there right now. And F Y twenty, our tax levy was fifteen point nine million dollars. That's where we started our, our discussion last year, that fifteen point nine million dollar levy. Last year, we took four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in new property on the rolls. And last year, the board authorized a three percent increase. So that's the four hundred and eighty-three thousand nine ninety-four that you see on the screen. So our total levy request to the county last year was sixteen point eight million dollars. I think this is important because we talk about how the levy gets set. The total valuation for the county last year was twenty-two point six billion dollars. And so what N I C requests as a levy is actually divided, if you will, among all the county valuation. And you can see that last year, the rate that was actually calculated by the county was point zero 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 seven four six. I think that's important to note as you look at the levy rate changes over time since two thousand and fifteen. Just to take an example of a sample taxable home within our district, in two thousand and fourteen, the taxable value of that home was a hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. And as we researched the tax statements on this property, they paid a hundred and ninety-five dollars in actual dollars as part of their taxes to North Idaho College. In two thousand and twenty, the taxable value of that same property was two hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred dollars. And the actual dollar amount that they paid North Idaho College last year for that same property in whole dollars was one hundred and ninety-six dollars. A couple of things just to note that, that we're all experiencing here in Cootney County right now. But if you go back to two thousand and fourteen, the, the valuation of the whole county was twelve point four billion dollars in two thousand and fourteen. In two thousand and twenty, the total valuation for the county went up to twenty-two point six billion dollars. And so with that increased valuation is new properties, but it's also the increased valuation of each property throughout the county, as you'll note with this sample taxable home. What's interesting to note though is that the total dollars that were paid to North Idaho College. And so just want to share that summary and kind of that story as we walk forward here. Because sometimes we hear N I C raise my taxes three percent. And I want to be really careful with our understanding, when N I C does that, that three percent that we talked about right here was based on the total levy amount from the prior year that, that the board certified. It's not, it's not a general across the board three percent. That's not how it works. It's, it's actually a three percent of our, our total amount that we're taking, which is spread over the entire valuation of the county. And so as we go into this next slide, I think that's just helpful background. There's a couple of graphs here that just show some of the changes that are happening to, to each of us as, as property taxpayers across the county. Looking at what happens when there's a change in the valuation of the county, a change in the valuation of the home, and there's a zero percent increase in our levy, looking at those changes there. And then looking at what happens when there's no change in county valuation, no change in home valuation, and no change in, in construction. So there's some things to just be aware of there that are very dynamic within our community right now. And so we always are, are very focused on these issues. The board is always very focused on these issues. And when the valuations go down, it's typically when we really spend a lot of time on this and it's a different concern, because that will actually inverse the situation we're in now and increase the actual levy rate to homeowners if the valuation of the county was to fall. And so this is just a graph, representation of that change. Another piece, just to talk briefly, is forgone tax amounts. Currently, the, the college holds three point three million dollars in forgone taxes. The backstory on this forgone tax amount is essentially the stewardship of the board. And so the board can take up to three percent every single year. The years that we don't take that, the board has the option to set that aside for forgone taxes. It's, it's important to note, the college is one of the largest holders of forgone taxes in the state, because our board typically has not taken that full three percent every single year, and that's where that money has gone. So as we have this taxing conversation, just want to share the details on that. And, and usually there's an interest in how much we're holding in forgone, so that, that amount is shown there. This is a slide the board has requested over time that just looks at sample property values across the, the county and what would happen if there was a one, two, or three percent taxing increase. I would just note this year, the only change to this slide that you've seen in prior years is we went ahead and we factored in a five percent increase of the home value and an overall ten percent increase in county valuation, just to help show the dynamics of what we're currently facing within our markets. In the past, we've shown this as a static amount, assuming the home did not increase and the county valuation did not increase. And so we've tried to do a better model of what's actually happening within the Cootney County market. Looking at our enrollment and revenue history, again, this line here across the top represents our, our enrollment. You'll see that still declining slightly. But really what I wanted to, to share with you tonight, that's important, is you'll see the increase here on the right-hand side of the state funding, both in general state fund appropriation and in C T E appropriation. And that represents the restoration of the five percent holdback and the increase that we talked about on that first slide. Moving on to the next slide here, staffing and enrollment trends. Again, you'll see that blue line representing our enrollment trend over time. And across the bottom, you'll see our staffing trends since two thousand and, F Y two thousand and twelve, showing the changes for staff, admin, full-time faculty, and part-time faculty over time. So just, just to note a, a couple of things that are important, as you see some pretty significant changes. F Y twenty to twenty-one represents not only the attrition plan, but also the early retirement program that was offered last year. And in F Y twenty-two, you'll notice the big change in faculty. A lot of that is attributed to the closure of the aerospace program. The, the next slide here just shows a breakdown that ties out all of those positions to where they fall within the college. There's been some requests for this information. So this is a program or department by department summation that ties back out to the prior chart for the F Y twenty-two numbers. This next page is just a graphical depiction of where these individuals lie throughout the institution. So you can see the number of people who are in academic instruction. That's one of our, our largest areas there. Student services in the, in the top right-hand corner, institutional support, just to kind of see how these fall out across the, the campus. These are based on the GASB designations that tie out to the audit. So when we talk about academic instruction, institutional support, academic support, you'll see that tie back out within the audit. I think this is really good news, especially for our students. As we discussed on the first page, we are proposing no increase in tuition for, for students for the next fiscal year. So you'll see the in-district rate would continue tuition and fees of a hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents per credit. And again, I would just like to note, N I C is waiving the accident insurance fee that typically is addressed on the first credit of each, credit of instruction for each student. That is proposed to be waived again for next fiscal year.
Chris, can I ask a question real quick on that waiving of the accident insurance?
Absolutely.
What far we had collected, I, I think, a fair bit of amount of money for that, so we went ahead and waived it. Are we still kind of waiving that out of our excess, or is that just something that we've decided to absorb and continue to waive that?
We, we are still using the excess funds that were collected during the peak of enrollment. And so we're, we're paying that down off of students, and we anticipate we can continue that this year and possibly next.
All right, a follow-on question if I may. So we're looking at rest of this year, possibly into next year. Then do we have a provision to continue to do that? Is that, are we capable of doing that financially? Or is that something that we'll have to look at at that time, or we haven't thought, thought about that yet?
We, we anticipate that we can lower that fee in the future based on, on several things, our experience, rating our enrollment and, and shopping for, for a new product there when the time comes. We, what we're doing now actually is not costing us the eleven dollars per student. So we've already got that cost savings built in. So whenever that, that pool of excess is, is depleted, we would go back and, and adjust this fee to a more reasonable number.
All right, thank you.
This next slide here just shows a comparison of resident tuition across our, some of our peer institutions. At the time that, that we put this proposal together, we had had no announcements of tuition changes for any of these institutions. If we hear something different before the, the second reading, we will definitely update that. And there's a history of how tuition has changed at N I C over the last several years. You can see in F Y sixteen, we did the six percent increase there. But we just note that that includes the addition of the Student Wellness and Recreation Center. Otherwise, those, those increases have been three percent or less. And this will be our third year in a row of no tuition increases. The fees, you'll see how that one hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents comes together. Our actual tuition is a hundred and one dollars and fifty cents for Cootney County residents. There's a general fee of thirteen fifty. You've got your commencement fee of thirty-three cents per credit, student health, athletics, student activities, ASNIC and the D H C bond fee, fifteen dollars per credit. The D H C bond fee, as you're aware, includes the Student Wellness and Recreation Center, giving us that total amount of a hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents per credit for residents. Moving on, the, the plant fund, we'll just note the, the primary changes here. There's a, a reduction in rent due to the closure of the aerospace center that was a leased facility, as well as there was a little rent in there from the Bonner's Ferry Center that was held into F Y twenty-one. Small change in the equipment replacement, excuse me, institutional, institutional equipment replacement fund driven by enrollment. And you'll note here the capital investment reserve, that's where it comes in, that two point five million dollars that comes in every year for the capital investment reserve. A little more detail on the capital investment reserve. You'll, you'll notice that we've got the Meyer Health Expansion dollars in there at this point. We anticipate some of those expenses coming in this fiscal year and the majority of them coming in, in F Y twenty-two. As we end out next fiscal year after Meyer Health Science, we're still showing eight point seven million dollars in that fund at the end of next fiscal year. Moving to the next slide here, the fee-based budgets, these are all enrollment-driven budgets. So we take those fees that you saw on the prior slide, those are multiplied by the total number of credits, and that's what determines these budgets. And so you'll see the ASNIC budget, student health, student activities, athletics, and commencement. Overall, total fee-based budgets around two point, excuse me, two million dollars in revenue for those programs. Next, we've got our service units, which is the D H C primarily, workforce training center, the Lakeside Children's Center and some other auxiliary services. These are, these are in many ways the backbone of, of the campus for many of our students. They, they use the D H C programs. That's the student union building, the Wellness and Recreation Center, the Res Hall primarily, and those things, the bookstore and, and dining services. And so you'll see the total revenue projection for the D H C, two point one million dollars next year. Workforce training, two point two million dollars. The Children's Center, six hundred and one thousand dollars, and other auxiliaries, parking services, the student cards, those, those things. Event services, four hundred and twelve thousand dollars for a total budget of five point three million dollars in revenue for fee-funded functions next fiscal year. Just hit briefly on the grants. There's not a change here. These are based on the F Y twenty-one figures, but these capture all of our major grants. Grants continue to be a large part of our operations. This includes the Area Agency and Head Start, which are two largest service grants. We are the trustee or the, the granting agency for those programs, six point nine million dollars total in grants, which brings us finally to the overall institutional budget. We take the general fund, the fees, the services, and the grants. For sixty-three point eight million dollars in revenue is the projected budget for next fiscal year. As Trustee Wood mentioned, we did have the chance to sit down and walk through this, as we typically do, as a walkthrough with each board member. I want to thank you very much for that time. And then, Trustee McKenzie, appreciate your feedback on some of the things that you've asked us to do. We've expanded some of those slides and charts at your request, and we'll be happy to provide more information at the workshop if that's a request. Trustee Banducci, if I may, I'd like to just show one other thing briefly. Dr. McClennan had talked about this and asked for this, but it's an update to the three-year rolling budget. And we just mentioned, this is one of the things that we were commended for from the Northwest Commission, is thinking about stability and making sure that we've got stable plans, and we're doing these long-range forecasts for the college. But putting in what we have proposed for the FY 22 budget and rolling that into FY 23. Right now, we've got nothing factored in for next fiscal year, other than new property on the rolls and an estimate for positive EWA. We've got the step increase proposed or estimated in there, some increased contracts and leases. And still, at that point, just want to show the important part here is, we're still showing some room, if you will, being very, very conservative, not looking at new revenue. My point here is, this budget is not based on one-time funds. This budget only includes continuing funding. And even with that continuing funding, we continue to show the next several years, we've got the money to continue to operate, even including adding things like the step increase or the salary increase. And that was just the point of this one, to make that highlight. I appreciate Dr. McClennan's leadership on really charging us to look ahead and make sure that we've got stable plans in the future. And it is definitely one of his mantras, that we do not use one-time funds for ongoing costs. With that, I'd like you to stand for questions or continue discussion.
Board, are there any questions or comments?
Well, just a quick comment, Mr. Chair, that, Chris, it's an excellent budget presentation. We're very fortunate that we're in good shape. We've continued to stay in good shape, and I really think that due to this administration really keeping their eye on it and making those long-term strategic plans and keeping the board informed as we go every step of the way. So, I just really appreciate all the hard work by President McClennan, you, and the team.
Thank you.
Chris, I just have kind of a generic question. I was mirroring what I was given, what was said to me when Christie and I did this preview with you, with what we got today in the book. And it looked like there was no changes at all. So, Trustee McKenzie and Trustee Howard went first on a Friday, I believe. And then, Trustee Barnes was on like Monday or Tuesday, and then I came over, Christie and I were Tuesday or Wednesday. Were there some changes through that process? Or did we all basically see the same one? Or were there some adjustments? Because there were obviously no adjustments since when Christie and I went through. So, I'm just kind of curious on the formation of this presentation, what we all saw compared to what we're seeing now. Did someone see something different, or did we all see the same thing, essentially?
Trustee Banducci, essentially, everyone could see the same thing and saw the same thing. I will note, the only changes that occurred, where we got some good feedback from Trustee McKenzie to expand this chart on the staffing trends, we had shown a smaller version just for the view of it. And he asked us to go back and expand that back, I believe, since 2012. We've added some footnotes at his request as well, that just talk about some of the things that have happened over time to provide some clarity. So, the only thing that's different from what, as an example, that Trustee McKenzie saw, and what you're seeing tonight, or what you saw at your preview, is we did make some updates to footnotes for clarity. There were some suggestions that came along that way, but no material changes occurred.
All right, thank you. I was just curious. And well done. Well done. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board?
Jeremy Banducci, Greg McKenzie would like to speak.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Chris, could you, at the budget workshop, could you provide, you did the staff, was it the staffing and like the department breakdown for this current year? Could you provide that just for one year of like 2012? Just to compare then and now at the budget workshop, or the next time we see this?
We will work to do that.
And I also wanted to say, I've asked a lot of data requests for everyone related to this budget, and I really appreciate the time everyone's provided to generate that. And Steve made great work. It's, if I, it's, I'm glad it's all incorporated, and he did great work with the data.
Thank you.
Chris, this is Todd. One more thing, if you wouldn't mind. That last slide you saw that had the three-year rolling, maybe at some point, we could all get a copy of that too, just for our own edification. That might be something that's nice just to have in our back pocket as we're thinking or looking forward.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Planning, you know, and planning a little bit in advance like that, which is, I think, wise.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Trustee Wood.
I know you're going to move on to the next item. And I would just, if I could, I would like to suggest that that is a very weighty topic, and I hate to ask Lita to hold on to it again. But I think it'd be beneficial for all five trustees to get an opportunity to hear it. So, I'd like to make a motion to table that for tonight and bring it back when Trustee Barnes can join us.
You know, Christie, that's a good suggestion. If you'll indulge me for a minute and permit me, I, we obviously have the ability to make that decision. I would like to reach out to Dr. Burns. Lita, are you amenable if we make the decision to delay that tonight? Just because we're at 8:20 already, and to give it due time, and to allow Trustee Barnes to participate? Would that work for you if we were to move that back to either May or June, if what we could do with that?
Trustee Banducci, thank you for asking me the question. Yes, of course, we would do that. I think the board has had a long meeting with a number of very important topics to deal with this evening. I will suggest, though, that you put it on the agenda, and that we may be able to present it in May. And the reason for that is Dr. Larry Briggs, our Dean of Instruction General Studies, is the main presenter for this. And Dr. Briggs will be retiring this year, and he will not be in attendance for our June meeting, because his retirement date will have already come and gone by the time we have our June board meeting. So, I would really like to see it presented in May. He has prepared a nice report for you, and I think you will find it very informational in terms of understanding how we manage course scheduling and deal with the students as they're related to their enrollment in their courses. So, looking forward to presenting it in May. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, River. Christie, would you be willing to go ahead and make your motion? And as part of that, that we move it to the May agenda?
Yes, so moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Greg McKenzie, seconds.
All right. Mark, do we need to vote on this?
Maybe just ask for unanimous consent?
Yeah, I think so. It's, we're not really taking any action on it. We're really just tabling it. So, you can ask for objections and go. We'll just guidelines here for Robert's rules of order, if you will.
Okey-dokey. Are there any objections to us tabling this until the May board meeting? All right. I don't hear any. So, we will table until the May board meeting, the course scheduling and cancellation to be presented by Dr. Burns at that time and Dr. Briggs. All right. The next item on the agenda is tab four. That is also Dr. Burns to speak to the fiscal year '21 and '22 faculty sabbatical.
Thank you, Trustee Banducci and members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to provide some information on faculty sabbaticals. I just want to begin by emphasizing how important the practice of awarding sabbaticals are to the faculty. As the policy states, NIC has the responsibility for growth of its faculty. The faculty believe that the opportunity to dedicate time, learning, reflecting, and practicing their craft is a renewing experience. The faculty who return from sabbaticals often remark on how exciting and how energized they become, and think that, and look forward to incorporating what they have learned into their courses. Sabbaticals are one of the ways that faculty continue to actively engage in NIC's shared value of providing educational excellence. I am not exactly sure how long NIC has been awarding sabbaticals, but I do know that we have been keeping records of those awards since about the 1987-88 academic year. The procedure defines the purposes for which sabbaticals may be granted. Working towards advanced degrees in the instructor's discipline, work that would be, that would help advance the instructor's experience in their discipline, things like coursework, engaging in programs of study, travel, that sort of thing, engage in research or pursue publication related to their discipline, engage in work outside the college that contributes to methods and practices that enhance teaching effectiveness. The goal, if you will, is to give faculty who have been teaching for at least seven years the time to engage in activities that enhance the quality of their teaching. When proposals are submitted to the faculty, submitted, a faculty committee reviews the proposals using a rubric. Those proposals are rated and ranked. The committee offers me a ranked order of the proposals. I also review the proposals, and then I take the request to President's Cabinet, again, a ranked order of proposals. President Cabinet has always demonstrated their support for faculty by approving at least one sabbatical. And in many years, more than one sabbatical has been approved. The fiscal position of the college is always taken into consideration throughout this process. So, I provide this just as a pre-overview for you in relation to the sabbatical process. And in your board packet, you have the proposals that were submitted for the current academic year and the proposals that have been approved for the upcoming academic year, 2021, 2022. And with that, I would stand for any questions.
Board, are there any questions, comments? Well, it's not, oh, Trustee McKenzie, did you have one?
Yeah. I just want to say, thank you. Thank you for including these sabbatical packets. And while it comes to mind, I also think we may want to initiate a policy to have all future sabbaticals required in board books just for taxpayers, just, you know, transparency uses and stuff. So, I don't know how we want to initiate that. But I was looking through some of these sabbaticals too. I just, I feel like there's a lot of interpretation to just administration, which is just great, and there's really no wrong answers. But it's just, along with policy, there's a leave without pay policy for higher education. And then, also, you can get your higher education degree through the sabbatical process. And it just boils down to discretion of the circumstances and a case-by-case basis. And there's really no wrong answer. But just what I've learned as being a trustee is that these positions have a lot of interpretability. And I appreciate you incorporating these sabbatical packets in the board book.
Chair Banducci, if I may respond?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Dr. Burns.
Thank you. Chair Banducci, Trustee McKenzie, I appreciate your comments, Trustee McKenzie, and pointing out sort of the differences between the two policies. I've just completed, I'm completing my ninth year as the Vice President for Instruction. And while it appears that these policies both provide the opportunity for faculty to take either a leave without pay or to take a sabbatical for, to further their education, that's the one area that you've spoken to. I will tell you, in the nine years that I have been Vice President for Instruction, I have not had one faculty member apply for a leave without pay to further their education. I believe that the primary reason for that, although I've not done a survey, or, you know, have not discussed this with any individual faculty member, but I truly believe that the reason we don't see that is that faculty simply can't afford to take an entire semester off just to continue their education. I know that you have seen the results of the compensation study, and I will tell you that, you know, the faculty need that salary to live in court lane and take care of their families and all of that sort of thing. So, if we relied solely on a leave without pay to provide educational experiences, I'm afraid that we would not have faculty continuing to seek these graduate studies that they are so invested in earning. And I would also add, I am very proud of North Idaho College that we support professional development in a number of ways that support both faculty and staff. And I think that's really important to contribute to the quality of education, the quality of support that is given to students at North Idaho College. So, I'm just expressing my gratitude to the board and the administration who approve budgets that allow for this continuing education to occur and to maintain the high quality of education that we provide here at NIC.
Yeah. Dr. Burns, thank you. And I do respect that, and it is a case-by-case basis. But you are talking to someone who also pursued their higher education degree while also working. And everyone's circumstances are different, and it boils down to, well, discretion. So, thank you. And I do value professional development at NIC, and we have a great workforce that does, is afforded that opportunity. It's a great perk working.
All right. Are there any other questions from the board, Trustee Wood or Trustee Howard?
Trustee Banducci, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Trustee Wood, go ahead.
I too would just express my appreciation for, I guess, the whole culture of NIC and that we are a higher education institution. And it would be, it would be quite the irony if we didn't promote professional development for our own employees. And so, I'm proud of our long history of providing sabbaticals. And it's not, everyone gets one. It's a very lengthy process. And I'm glad that we have been diligent in providing that, and we need to continue to do so.
All right. I just, I had a question and a comment. I also reviewed the four sabbaticals. I was very interested, read through the information that I was provided. My question is, looking at what Professor Cunningham was doing, the biology professor, that looked to me to be a very worthwhile effort and potentially save our students a significant amount of money with the open educational resource, the OER textbook that he was trying, he was working on. I guess my question is for the Biology 100 classes, was he successful in completing that? Has that, or will that be implemented? Or what's the status of that project that you worked on this past fall?
Chair Banducci, yes. Mr. Cunningham did complete the project, and he did implement the results of his project this spring. He did provide for me his assessment of his sabbatical, which included his own personal appraisal that his, the outcome was very good. And he, as he said, he implemented this. And but in terms of really being able to measure at this point the impact it has on students, because it is the initial semester, he doesn't have any legitimate data to share at this point. So, he will continue to implement this low or no-cost textbook in the fall again. And after a few semesters, he will have enough data to collect to be able to share his results. Anecdotally, students have voice to him, their appreciation of the low cost of the textbooks that he is using, or low and no-cost resources that he, educational resources that he is currently using in this spring semester and will continue to use in the fall. So, he- So he has received a positive response from students. But in terms of really having, um, data that is statistically reliable, at this point, we don't have, have that to share. And if I could just take a moment and tell you that, um, the state is actually providing some funding for the community colleges to engage in, uh, this investment in low or no cost educational resources for students. North Idaho College will be joining the other three community colleges and developing a process by which we can, um, move to eventually be able to award perhaps the Associate of Arts degree, all using very low or no cost textbooks and other educational resources for our students. So that work will begin this summer and again, it won't be done in, in a heartbeat. But I would hope that maybe by, um, the spring of 22, we will probably have, uh, a number of courses available. Um, I am proud to share with you that we have a number of faculty who have engaged in this work already. We have a, a working group that, um, is, is talking about this initiative and working towards it. And, um, I think that the funding that the state is going to provide is even going to launch us more quickly into providing, um, these lower cost, uh, educational resources to our students. So I'm, I'm really, um, very proud of our faculty for, um, embracing this opportunity ahead of them. And, um, I think that we will have more information to provide to you by, again, maybe this time in spring of 22.
Well, that's great. You know, I would love to have you guys continue to kind of brief us as we move along forward as to, as to how this has played out. I think any initiatives of this type are worthwhile to pursue. Uh, I'm glad to hear the collaboration that's going on. I know in the, in the business department, I know with some of the work they're doing from McGraw-Hill that, uh, uh, instructors Tedman and, uh, and Wilhelm have been able to provide, uh, books, ebooks, I believe it is for their students also. So I know there's a couple of different things going on on the campus that are, uh, uh, helping our students. So anything we can do to, to advance that, I think is, is, is great, you know? So yeah, I'd love to keep hearing, uh, as you seem, as you deem appropriate, you know, updates on how this is going. Very worthwhile effort. So thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the, the other one is, is more of just a quick comment. I don't mean to be hogging it here, but, uh, I, instructor, uh, Professor Jewels found that kind of interesting. I'm, I'm a war buff history. Cadet grad kind of does that to you and particularly, uh, the Civil War is of interest. Uh, if you've ever walked a Civil War battlefield, it's a unique experience. And he was doing a work on the Civil War and its impact in the Pacific Northwest. His manuscript is monograph. And, uh, so I guess I'm curious, did he get that completed? And to be honest, I've been curious at some point to maybe have an opportunity to see that and what he discovered and, and how the Pacific Northwest played into the, into the Civil War in that time. Cause, uh, again, uh, interest in mind personally.
He indeed, um, did complete his work and in fact, while he was finishing the manuscript for the book, he was also able to get two articles published, related articles published from the, uh, in relation to the manuscript he, he was preparing. And, um, he, it has been accepted for publication and, um, you know, he just told me, we just discussed this recently. And, and I would say that in the very near future, the book will probably be available for your purchase or for your checkout from North Idaho College Library.
Very good. Well, thank you for the update. That, uh, obviously anytime you're published, that's an impressive saying. All right. Is there any, anything else from anyone regarding the four sabbaticals?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Trustee Howard.
In keeping with our policy that the North Idaho College Board of Trustees recognizes that the college has a responsibility for professional growth of its faculty. And the college is committed to providing sabbatical leaves to full-time tenured faculty who have completed seven full academic years of service. I would like to move to approve the proposed sabbaticals of David Cunningham, James Jewell, Jonathan Fry and Sherri Simkins.
You know, Ken, I would be happy to entertain that motion, but I have to be quite honest. I'm not sure we need to do that. Two of the sabbaticals were already completed this past fall. And if I understand it, uh, and President McLennan alluded to this earlier, while we were part of that approval process in the, in the past history and, and the, in the recent history, we have not been a part of that. It's not formalized in the policies or procedures for us to be part of that approval process. So I think this has already been approved up to probably Dr. Burns or maybe President McLennan. And I think this was more of an informational item. So I, I don't know that we have to approve anything. Dr. Burns, uh, President McLennan, am I correct in that?
Yeah, Trustee Banducci, you, you are correct. And, and to, again, put this in context, uh, that the term recent, it, it's been, um, at least since I've been here, that this has been the practice of, uh, of the way they've been approved this year. And I'm pretty sure it happened some years before that. I'm not sure exactly what year that was, 2014, I believe, 13, 14, somewhere around there. So yes, this was brought, um, at, at, I think your request, uh, or Trustee McKenzie's request as an information item.
Mr. Chair, having been corrected, I will withdraw my motion.
Yes, sir. Sorry, Ken, I wasn't trying to come down on you there or anything.
That's all right. That, that, that's exactly what should have been done.
Well, I think it was a great motion. Um, and, and President McLennan, I was using just some broad language because again, I, I'm not clear on the exact timelines either. So, um, it's sort of like when you use a couple, a few, a handful, plus or minus a year or two. So yeah, I, I don't know the exact timelines on those either. Uh, is there anything else on this subject? Other than we probably ought to wish, uh, the couple folks well in the fall of 2021, this coming fall when they will, uh, be undergoing theirs. Uh, yes, the, the two new ones. All right. Think we're to, the next agenda item is for President McLennan. And, um, it's operational decision making.
Thank you, Chair Banducci. Actually, this is a mistake on my part. This should actually have Trustee McKenzie's name by it. Uh, he requested this item to be put on the agenda.
All right, uh, uh, Trustee McKenzie, please.
Well, just in my short time of being a trustee, it, uh, seems like the operational, uh, decision-making is, uh, well, it's still being formalized in my mind, um, officially. And, uh, I find it just interesting, um, the diverse viewpoints between Trustee Wood and, and even, uh, Trustee Banducci. So, uh, thank you everyone for allowing this informational item on. And let's see, so I, I've been reading, uh, trustee material and it just seems to be not, uh, well, a single definition of an operational decision. And, uh, just for everyone's, the board, uh, mainly writes policy and, um, and then complying with those policies. For example, the, um, is open to interpretation such as the, um, sabbatical policy has been written for probably, I think it's 20 years and things have changed. Then it doesn't matter when, uh, but it just highlights the interpretability and the, um, individual choices. And there's, I wouldn't say there's any wrong answers, just, um, expectations of how people interpret things. And, um, but it, it seems that, uh, things such as, um, well, uh, I'm sorry, I just blinked. Well, uh, oh man, I gotta write these things down. Yeah, I was just hoping anyone, uh, would be willing to, uh, provide more definition in, in operational decisions and, um, so is anyone willing to provide that clarification or I can maybe provide some examples?
Mr. Chairman, uh, if I could add a couple of points?
Is this Mark?
Yes.
Yeah, please. Okay, go ahead, sir.
So, so something that it, that is, um, adds, I, I think some, some lack of clarity to this is, is the statutes. I think we need to keep in mind that I, the North Idaho Community Colleges and Community Colleges in Idaho are creatures of statute, the state legislature. They passed the laws to create those. And the, and for community colleges, the legislature passed laws that created the Board of Trustees. And the statutes also, um, set forth what are the powers of the Board of Trustees. And, and for North Idaho College, for any community college, the powers of a Board of Trustees are, are set forth in Idaho Code 332107. And those are, 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 you know, basically somewhat limited. They can be, um, I, I think of this in terms of a, uh, the Board of Trustees has the power to, to, um, create policies for the governance of the institution. And then they have lists of certain discrete activities such as, um, acquiring and holding, disposing of water rights, buying and selling property, revenue bonds if necessary, um, those sorts of things. Now, it, it, it can be confusing because people think of a Board of Trustees similar to a school district. Now, school districts are also creatures of state law, but the statutes that allow, that provide for the powers of school district trustees are much, much broader. School district trustees by statute a- actually have the, the authority over, um, employees. They do by statute. They, they are the reviewing board for employees. They are the reviewing board for, um, student discipline. They have very, uh, uh, very more detailed powers relating to operations and governance of school districts. Generally, um, Board of Trustees are not responsible for operational decision-making. It's not listed anywhere in the statutes. Your, as trustees, your authority by statute is to write policies for the governance and then have the ability to do the, the other nine listed discrete things that are, that are in the statutes. So one of the things that, that the Board of Trustees has done is they, uh, board has enacted a board policy 2.01.02 and that addresses the responsibilities and duties of the Board of Trustees. And I would just recommend that, that the board members review this from time to time because it addresses, again, determined broad general policies. And then it has discrete things, um, that, that the board will take, will undertake. It also discusses the, the college president and the authority of the college president. And by, by policy, this Board of Trustees has recognized that it is the president, the administration, that has a responsibility and the authority to administer the college, um, and to, uh, operate the college on a day-to-day basis. So, uh, you know, I, I just want to throw that out there because people talk about, what do governing boards do? Well, it depends on what state, it depends on what type of a entity. But most importantly, it depends on what authority has been given to the board by the state legislature, in this case Idaho's legislature. So keep that in mind, I think, when you're thinking about these things. And we can go back and review them, uh, on a case by case basis. So that's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Trustee Howard.
Yeah, let me just sort of, um, reinforce what Mark just said. Our, we have a policy 2.01.02. And it says the responsibilities of the board are as follows. Number one is to determine the broad general policies that will govern the operation of the district. And the second item is to select a point and evaluate the president of the college who shall be responsible for the general administration and implementation of board policies in the ongoing operations of the college. Now that's, that's our rendition of the policy, um, that is mandated also by the state.
All right. Uh, that's good. You know, it's interesting. Trustee McKenzie had put together a couple of worksheets with some excerpts from the ACCT folks, both out of their, um, different emails and tweets they do and, and, uh, the trust, and then some of the trusteeship, uh, book, trusteeship in community colleges. And there's a whole lot there. And I know, I think he wanted to maybe have those available to share as we can all look at some of what, uh, ACCT has said on this subject. And that even some of their, their things, as I've read through it several times now, are, are even a little bit contradictory, a little bit as to the boards and, and the relationship with the president slash CEO. They use those CEO and president terms interchangeably. And I, and there was a couple of them. And then I was looking at that, to the policies we've established. And then I, I actually reread the president's, uh, contract. I looked at the language there and just tried to see where we're consistent and where maybe we're not, and not consistent. And, and there's a lot of consistency, but there's some inconsistency. Maybe that's something we can work on in the future as we go forward. But I found a couple of things kind of interesting. And I think this dovetails with what's been said. Because in the president's contract, there's an excerpt that talks about the president appointed by the boards, and, and we use the term chief executive officer. And then at the very end of that, it talks about what he's doing. We've got a course applicable laws and policies, rules and regulations approved or sanctioned by the board. Then, then addition to foregoing, the president shall also be responsible for carrying out all duties described verbally or in writing by the board. And carrying out these duties, the president recognizes the need for effective communication with the board. That's something that's in the contract. And then one of the things that's kind of interesting, one of the ACC, ACCT thing says, is boards and CEOs ideally usually work in harmony. And it says boards are responsible for oversight, but their one employee, the CEO, and the CEO's administration is responsible for doing the work of the college, while the boards monitor the work and share its, the call, the community's needs. So it talks about that, that the relationship there. And, and I know there's even some discussion, this, this, again, then this calls the, the president, the employee. And I know there's some discussions on that and, and what, what the correctness of that is or not. So it's just interesting as you, as we read these and understand the, the relationship between the board and the president. So.
Mr. Chair. Yes, thank you. I think the key is ACCT sends, has some great guidelines for all of us. And I, I look forward to some training sessions with them. But you should always come back to your state statutes and your board policies for specific on, to your institution. For instance, you know, we had some discussions, uh, Greg has said that I, I maybe don't interpret operation decisions the same way that you do or he does. Well, when I do, I would really truly try to give good mentoring to our new trustees and help them understand. Sometimes that's rejected, you know, for instance, this week it was soundly rejected when I, I said they didn't have access to personnel files. I don't really know what to do with that. Our attorney has also given that sort of direction. A lot of times what we try to help with understanding is just outright rejected. So it's difficult. It's always a difficult situation having these kind of discussions.
All right, fair enough. Uh, I will suggest to you, one of the things that occurred this week, it's a continuing frustration that I've had for my time on the board is that sometimes I'm engaged in conversations or discussions on subjects that I don't, I'm not fully apprised of. It'd be sort of like working in a classified environment without being read into the program. You know, either, either I have the security clearance and I'm cleared and I have need to know and I'm there and I'm able to discuss it at the appropriate level and with the proper amount of, of, uh, backstory narrative, information, and I could do it in an intelligent manner, maybe ask articulate questions and, and, and do it in a way that I'm adding to the discussion and hopefully, you know, moving the, the ball forward. And then sometimes we're sort of in that middle ground. And then sometimes I guess we're just supposed, we've just got to be a sponge, I guess, absorb what we're told. But, but again, not knowing, here's my frustration. Sometimes I want to know the information raw. I, I only see the intel. I want to see the, the, you know, again, maybe that's a function of my background. But I don't, oh, I don't want to, I want to know what's being withheld or what's being filtered or, or what's being done. And I don't see that in a malicious way. It's just the process. Anytime you, the more hands things pass through or the more people's interpretations there are. Anytime the more hands things pass through, or the more people's interpretations there are, like that exercise you sit in a circle, and they start, and they say blue, and it comes back round and ends up brown. So that's me. I was asking for information because we were going to be briefed on something. And I guess if I just want to sit there and take what I'm given, and, and again, this is not a condemnation of anybody. I just have no force to just take it at face value. I get the perspective that's presented to me. And there's no discernment on my part, and there's no, you know, evaluation or anything. So for me, I like to get the data and draw my own conclusion, you know, trying to look at both sides of the issue. So, you know, anyway, so I'm not rejecting anybody, and I don't even think you were referring to me in that. But I'm one who's going to always seek more information and more data. I'm a question-asker, you know, so.
Chair.
And Mr. Chair, I think that's, I think that's fine, Mr. Chair, when it's the areas that it falls under board governance. But if it doesn't fall under our governance, I think we have to accept the advice of our attorney. I would think the other attorney on this board would give us the same advice.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yes. You know, I think we've all struggled with this question about where does our responsibility as policymakers end? And then where does the responsibility of the decision-maker in the operational end of this start or end? And I would suggest to you that there's an overlap in that. Sometimes there are things that we want to make the decision on, but it's not our responsibility. That's been delegated to the administration. There are also areas where I think, in order to make a good decision, the administration comes to us and seeks our advice. I know I've been involved in several meetings where that's happened, where the administration has come and laid out circumstances, asked what our opinions are. But ultimately, that's still their decision because that falls within the operational aspect of their responsibilities. That doesn't mean that we can't hear things and be part of the information that goes into the decision by the operational authority. And I think that's where a lot of us have difficulty, is it's something that we want to know something about, but it's not our decision. And that line is sometimes blurred for some of us. But we have to, I think, defer to the president in terms of making decisions on operational issues.
I respect that. As I asked a question this week, do I want to be 25% informed, 50%, 75%, 90%? I'd say 100%, but I don't know if that's possible. So it's a challenge. And then it comes back to me at some point, too. What if the educational system establishes the norms or the standards? And how do we do it in practice versus the statutes, at least for the state of Idaho and the four community colleges we have? And at what point is what is actually illegal or in contrast with the statute itself, in contradiction with the statute? So there may be things that, are they illegal, or are they just ill-advised? Or are they just not something that we do normally in practice? So the question is, you know, anyway, I think that's the question sometimes. Christie, you want to say something?
No.
Chair Banducci, have something to say?
Trustee McKenzie, go ahead.
Well, maybe, hopefully in closing, so we can all go to bed. It seems like the word boils down to oversight. As in, while it may be, you know, the CEO's decision, how informed do we need to be to assess the decisions being made? And as it's definitely a gray area, there's no easy answer. And it's case by case, again, to the interpretability of these jobs. So, but I think it's, I keep reading in my trustee books about the emphasis of oversight. And where that's delegated away, I'm still searching for, for the exact specifics.
Well, Mr. Trust, yeah, Mr. Chair, yeah. I guess I want to let everybody know what they probably already know, or at least repeat it. If we see consistent misapplication of the administration's authority, our remedy is to get rid of the president. But until we find that there's a consistent basis upon doing that, that's the president's responsibility. And we've got to support them in that responsibility or get rid of the president if we think that they're not performing their function properly. So we do have a remedy. It's just not necessary on every, every individual instance.
All right. How about we ended on that note if everybody's in agreement? It's nine o'clock, and Trustee McKenzie.
Excuse me, Trustee Banducci, Trustee Banducci, did I just hear you say we're going to end it on the note of the remedy being to get rid of the president?
Just for that discussion topic. Just on the note of what Ken said.
I'm teasing.
Oh, I missed that. I'm sorry. No, I was just going to move on on the agenda. I think I missed that. Sorry. I just, I'm going to say a couple of things real quick. And mine's kind of part board chair report and part remarks at the beginning of the order. And mine will be a little bit shorter because President McLennan touched on. I wanted to congratulate, make sure we congratulated Randy Boswell. It's a tremendous honor. And Rick's already done that, so just everybody acknowledge and shake his hand and tell him well done. You know, he's one of the favorite trainees with USA Wrestling, and his title, and he's gone for a couple of weeks in January. That's impressive. His resume is impressive. And the world-class athletes that he's worked with and all places around the world that he's traveled and supported USA Wrestling. It's phenomenal. And I want to say just a couple more words on the wrestling program. For the abbreviated truncated season they had, when the folks outside the West were wrestling all year long, many of them, and Oregon and Washington and us, by inclusion, were just shut down. And it was really a challenge to go out there and take sixth place was amazing. And there's 10 weights, if you don't know that, and we had five All-Americans, so we placed in half of the weights. We had kids like our heavyweight, who had been an All-American, but because he hadn't wrestled any matches, he didn't get a seed. So he gets a returning All-American in his first round, loses a heartbreaker three to two, could have folded up his tent. Came back and pinned six consecutive opponents until he got into the match for three-four with the other guy that had a bunch of pins, and they started a big attempt to throw each other. Unfortunately, our guy ended up on the short end of that. But he went six and two, wrestled eight times and took four. Just amazing. Now, that's Cole Feliciano at 285, 285 pounds. Just amazing. Then you had a kid like Sal Silva, who'd lost in the semis last year. Came back, but five and O. And the kids he beat in the semis, he beat a kid, a guy that was a four-time high school champ, Greco-Roman national champ, he's represented the US Junior Worlds. And then in the finals, he gets the returning champion from the year before, and he beats them both. I mean, that's pretty impressive for the few matches that he had. And we had a lot of guys do that. Our 174 Navarro went fourth place, went four and two. Our 157, you know, he got sixth place. And that's a great story because his dad was battling cancer and had had a nine-hour surgery that very week at the national tournament. And that kid was just trying to keep it together, you know, and Brandon did a fantastic job. And in fact, I was told his dad was home from the hospital, and so hopefully that's a good story there. So, you know, he was battling. And so that's just an amazing story. And then we had another young man who'd been injured. And I want to speak to this real quick. Randy Boswell got him healed up. He did not wrestle a single match this year because of the way the schedule went. His first matches of the season were at national, and that's Western presser. And he went five and two and placed seven, and those are the only matches he had the entire season. So, you know, he recovered from knee surgery. And then he's a 3.87 GPA student, by the way, and he does an amazing job in the classroom and the community. So I understand he's an incredibly young man. But he rehabbed and fought to get back. So I wanted to share that because all five of our wrestlers are overcomers. And when our heavyweight did lose, he ended up losing to the number one seed. So, I mean, all these guys did amazing. And our 285 pounder, he's been mentioned, he's a minority student. And it was shared with me, he probably wouldn't be in school if it wasn't for the athletics, you know, and him competing. So I'm thrilled that our wrestling team is there and can give these opportunities to these young men. And so anyway, I think I'm done. But I just wanted to brag on them for a little because all impressive stories, all five of them, and they all did amazing. And we should be, as Rick already indicated, we're extremely proud of them as a college and a community. They represented us very well. I'm done. Any remarks for the beginning of the order?
Mr. Chair. Yes, the one thing I'd like to, I'd like to suggest to all of the trustees is that we get back with Shannon and try and arrive at a date for our training. The dates I've seen now are pushed into July and August. And we've, I think, promised everybody that we would try and get involved in some training. And we've got the contract, and we just need to get a date for everybody.
I understand. I'm part of the holdup on that, but hopefully I explained that to everybody. I'm a work in progress on that because of my military commitment and my business commitment.
All right, Trustee Banducci. And Kent, Trustee Howard, thank you for bringing that up. I do want to encourage that to happen sooner rather than later. And I say that because of the context of the investigation that we have with the NWCCU, the accrediting body. We're going to have to demonstrate some progress on some pretty substantive issues that are going to be, that needed to be addressed as we respond and work our way through this. Taking that action with that training to show progress on board knowledge and board conduct is going to be critical to that response. We have 45 days. That clock started ticking on Tuesday. I also want to let the board know that I had a conversation with Dr. Ramaswamy this afternoon. Asked, I had some questions I had about the letter that we received and wanted to get some context, what an adequate response would look like. And they were very helpful. But one of the things that Dr. Ramaswamy offered was he's willing to come and meet with the board, if the board is willing, and he can help you from an accreditation perspective, understand how some of the importance of the issues that we're dealing with from, you won't be hearing that from me, but you'd be hearing it from somebody who is an authority on this issue. And I explained that that would most likely, because of the scheduling difficulties we've had with the ACCT contract, that it would most likely only work if we did it at a scheduled, regularly scheduled board meeting. So if the board would like to consider that, you know, please let me know.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? All right. I am not hearing anything. I will call this meeting adjourned. Everybody have a good evening.